I hope I'm not going to keep you that long.
I hope not.
This is your last time, too. That's right. You don't have long to put up with me, Paul. We'll call the meeting to order. The Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we live. Guide us this evening if we make our decisions, Christ. Amen. This is a special call meeting of the Newton City Council, December the 12th, 2023, for the purpose of a public hearing on the FYI 2024 budget. I'm going to open that public hearing at this time and ask Mr. Craver if he has a presentation.
Yes, Mayor Brady, members of council, we're here yet again. It's that time of year where we host our, you know, a public hearing to consider the annual budget for our next fiscal year, which will begin after your January meeting, if adopted. I have a few slides here we're going to go through typically in summary type to talk about the proposed budget. We'll talk about some trends. We'll talk about some of the items I think are particular interests to you as elected officials and members of our community. At any time in which you may have a question, please feel free to stop me. We can talk about as much or as little as you'd like. So without any further ado, I'm going to proceed through the presentation. On behalf of the staff, I'd like to, you know, declare that yet again, the City of Newton has received this distinguished budget presentation award. That's not an easy task. Each of you know, because each of you has seen a copy of the budget for all the years that you have served in your position, the amount of time and effort that goes into that. In particular, I want to thank, of course, our city manager, Mr. Cletus Phillips, and Rhonda Hilton, our program manager, as well as the department directors. There's a lot of time and effort that go into putting this document together and being recognized by our peers. Their GFOA is quite an accomplishment. So as we get into the 2024 budget, there are certain particular challenges. None of these, I think, should stand out to any of you because we've talked about them during retreats and other times in which we gather to do the business of the city. Of course, you know, the first one is, you know, balancing the expected levels of service with the cost of providing such services. We are well-known in this region for providing excellent services to the citizens and visitors alike, and the cost of providing those services is a challenge at times. Incorporating salary increases into the budget, you know, we are very much in a competitive marketplace where we need to pay members of our staff what they deserve for the services they provide. And, you know, as you have learned over the years, you know, the cost of providing those services can take up a lion's share of our budget. Fifty-one percent of this proposed budget is due to wages, and additional 26% is the benefits assigned to those individuals. Here at the City of Newton, we don't make widgets. We are service-oriented. We are people-first organization. We provide service through the people we have. And so lion's share, again, of our budget is going to be included in the wages and benefits provided to those individuals. The fourth number down there, the first, fourth budget, is the estimating of millage rate based on the Tax Digest that has been growing primarily on reassessments. I want to make sure we notice that, that while the digest has grown, it has been mainly around reassessments, not necessarily new growth. We've had new growth, but again, a large share of that has been on reassessments. And then the impact of continuing costs and increase of goods and services. And we can get into that here in the following slides. So the general fund, as required by law, is balanced. In the proposed budget you have in front of you, we have other funds, special revenue funds and others, enterprise funds, but the general fund, as required by law, is balanced here. You can see the number. It's hard to see maybe from far away, but there's a $3.6 million increase from 2023, which amounts to an 11% increase. But what you have in front of you is a balanced budget that uses no reserves to balance the budget. Percentage change over time, beginning in 2020, moving to 2024. You've seen years where we've had small increases, the year right out of the pandemic. Then we've had years where we've had larger increases. Some of that in this 2022 year due to reimbursements and FEMA and tornado and things like that. The general fund budget had a larger percentage increase. This year, again, as said on the first slide or second slide, was, you know, primarily due to increase in salaries and wages and some cost of services. That lends itself well into this next slide, budget trends, salary increases over time. We have had years where we've had a, you know, cost of living modest increase back in 2020. We didn't add people. We didn't have much of an increase in 2021, coming out of the pandemic. We rebounded in 2022. This year, we had a small cost of living increase across the board for folks. But this next year, as we've considered throughout the year, in order to remain competitive, we have on average a 10.5% increase for staff members. New employees. How many full-time employees have we added over time? In 2020, there were six new employees. In 2021, coming out of the pandemic, we added no new employees. As we rebounded in 2022, you see six employees were added. This current year we're in, we added seven budgeted full-time employees, and the proposed budget shows five new employees being added to the budget. Here's a millage rate history over time. This slide should look very familiar to many of you. The rollback rate is shown in blue, and the adopted rate, the rate that this body adopts each year, is shown in orange, with very few exceptions, shown in 2012, 16, and 18. The only three years in which this body did not adopt the rollback rate. This is an important slide because as we look to 2024, what you see here is the rate staying the same. We've talked big picture about the general fund, some of the challenges. We've talked about some of the major impacts to the budget. Let's talk in particular about revenue, and as you'd expect after a few of these slides, we'll talk in particular about expenses. Revenue, trends, projections, some of our revenue categories, those large revenue categories you're all familiar with, and some of the changes we foresee in 2024. So over time, we've had large revenue. I've alluded to it earlier. Responding from the tornado, there's large revenue. We had FEMA reimbursement and GMA reimbursement that added a large revenue item in the 2022 budget. We're in the budget year here. Our estimated revenue is 36 million, 36.7 million. Those revenue categories, unchanged from years past, local option sales tax remains our largest revenue item, followed by property tax, insurance premium tax, occupational tax, or what some may colloquially call business licenses. Water and light is the transfer we get from Newton Utilities. Franchise fees, title ad valorem tax, alcohol tax, fines and permits. You see most increases shown year over year from '23 to '24 in these revenue categories. Some of the revenue changes between 2023 and 2024. You see in 2024, we're forecasting a million-dollar revenue change in local option sales tax. You see here on real numbers on the previous slide, those top revenue categories. But the revenue changes here, a million-dollar change increase in local option sales tax. We're showing an $800,000 increase in property tax and so on and so on. You can, I'm not going to read that for you, but you can all read what our forecasts are for the increase in revenue for those major revenue items for the 2024 budget. That was a quick three slides about revenues. Now we're going to look at expenditures. So there's certain topics. We want to talk about some trends and projections, some of those major expense categories. Look at expenses by function. How do we spend the money? How do we plan on spending that money? And then what are those major operating expenses, expenditures, excuse me? So the trends and projections you see over time increased as we've grown as a, as a city, as an organization, the services we provide through the people that provide them. Major expense categories, as alluded to earlier in the presentation, primarily wages and the benefits that accompany those wages, operating expenses here in the third group, and then our capital expenses. Looking at a trend line here from 2022 on the left to 2024 on the right. In those same items I showed before, wages, benefits, operating and capital, they're pulled out here. Fairly flat, modest, but growth over time. By function, general government, generally understood as those people in City Hall. Public safety, 50% of our budget affords the opportunity to have law enforcement and fire safety. Folks, here in our community, that's $18.3 million of the expenses. Public works, community development and other services. Other services are Main Street, Carnegie Library, leisure services. Our major operating expenses, as you can see, moving from left to right. Contractual services is the largest, continues to be the largest, has been the largest year over year for the past decade. Repairs and maintenance, vehicles. We have a pretty good handle on the fleet now. So there's not a tremendous amount of new vehicles in this year's budget, but what we feel is appropriate for law enforcement, public works, fire, to make sure that we can meet the needs of the citizens. There's a little bit of a drop in that, but the rest of them are kind of on par with what you would expect. Modest gains in some electricity, but, you know, others that aren't. Gasoline, for instance, is kind of leveled off. We have a lot of vehicles that use a lot of gasoline. There are years when we forecast that being higher. This is not that. We don't envision that being the case in 2024. Transfers to sanit, transfer to sanitation, that's the general fund transfer to support the sanitation fund. We see that as the same year over year in this year's budget. Benefit changes. I've talked to it earlier, you know, that a lion's share of our monies go to wages, salaries, and the benefits that accompany those. Here, as we've seen over time, insurance growing. These are years that colored bars left to right. FICA retirement, our retirement has increased, although we envision, you know, that we're going to be able to stabilize that over time, hopefully with some of the action you take today, looking at a different type of retirement plan program for new staff beginning in January. Workman's comp has stayed pretty flat over time. So I talked a little bit earlier about the number of employees we have, the number of employees we were asking to add in this 2024 budget. What you see at the top line is current, in the budget being proposed, 305 full-time employees with six, six part-time employees and seven elected officials. The five new employees, that total $423,027, that's all baked in salaries, wage benefits, are the assistant city manager for finance and HR, which was approved already by this body in 2023, a probation officer, which was approved, fire inspector, the Wadsworth Auditorium event manager, and a, we're moving our open records clerk in the police department from part-time to full-time. So that accounts for the five positions that were talked about and discussed earlier. Another thing we're proud to tell the public, and we're able to help our staff members is your minimum starting pay the City of Newton hourly is $17.46 per hour. It's taken a little while. When I first got here, it was not near that. And so if you come and you want to find a gainful employment, we're, we're the place for you. And then the increases that were discussed earlier, year over year in salaries, wages, which also affect benefits, are part of this bottom sentence. I'm not going to read it to you, but what it includes is a cost of living increase for all employees thereafter, 2% additional based on longevity. There's a formula behind that. And then there's a small market or merit adjustment that was delegated and given to each department director, and they, she or he could then make recommendations based on the performance of the folks that worked in, in their respective departments. The average pay increase we talked about earlier across the board is 10.5%. Being that 50% of our operating expenditures are allocated to public safety, you could imagine most of those increases are due to larger increases that we've talked about through this year and are very supportive for our public safety personnel. So forecast, what do, what do we forecast, 2024, 2025 and 2026? It's always, I think, smart to look ahead. You see small, modest gains over time, but nothing outrageous, nothing extraordinary or outstanding. This, again, is the general fund. So there's a lot on this slide. I can share this presentation with you if you'd like to look at it. We can put it online, too, if people, members of the public would like to look at it. But what are some of the forecasted three-year budget highlights? You see the percentage increase, which I just showed here in real numbers. The second point is of interest. We're forecasting an increase in ad valorem growth, more so than sales tax. Ad valorem of $1.6 million change from '24 to '26 compared to only an $800,000 change in sales tax. This last sentence, I'm going to read these last two sentences in a. The rollback millage rate is going to continue to be difficult to take each year. That the council may want to consider a home set exemption for potential tax relief for homeowners. And if there's a great interest there, we can talk more about that at a later meeting. However, it's important to note that second to last sentence, that that millage rate is continuing to take the rollback as a challenge each year. This next line, forecasting marginal revenue gains in categories such as title ad valorem tax and some of those other main revenues we talked about. For expenses, we see a 4.5% change and a 4% in '25 and '26 respectively. Not a great substantial wage change. We believe that some of the moves we've made over the past few years have gotten us into a place that we're very competitive and feel confident about where we're at now from a salary and wages standpoint, as well as benefits. As with all organizations, we're going to continue to push against the headwinds of increasing costs for healthcare. Medical pharmaceutical costs continue to rise, but, you know, our, our team is constantly looking at the plans we have. And there may be a time in the future whereby we come to this group and look at modifying the plan we have, particularly on the medical and pharmaceutical side. We have very rich plans. We want to make sure that our staff are treated well, but I think there's an opportunity in the future to look at, in particular, the gold platform. We do see a 7% increase in retirement contributions. However, like I talked about earlier, this body is going to hopefully consider and take some action later today at our regular meeting that may help cure and fix some of this in the long term as we move towards a 401 defined contribution plan. We think that there's some opportunity to curb costs and manage that at a rate that's just a little bit better for our organization in the future. We see consistent funding of capital projects in the general fund, frankly, due to the passage of SPOLOST 2025. Voters came out and that referendum supported that. That's going to help support our capital needs over the next six-year time horizon. Revenues begin in January of 2025 for that. And we believe right now the staffing levels are adequate. Like I said, in the general government, community development, likely going to continue to need to and pay attention to public safety and public work, so there may be small, modest additions to staff members in those departments. All funds in, so everything you've heard me up until now talk about is the general fund, our main operating account. Most of our work comes out of the general fund. We have other funds. We've talked to them before, the SPOLOST fund, impact fee fund, hotel motel tax fund, et cetera, some of these special revenue funds. All funds combined, you see this trend over time, a large increase. You may be saying to yourself, you know, Hasko, what, what's the difference between '22, '23? Well, we got in the trash business. So that enterprise fund, when we consider all funds in together, is what accounts for that large increase. And so if you look at them in groupings, the first three from 2021, '22, this is before we got into the billing and managing customer service side of our sanitation business, were pretty flat and consistent. Well, the same is here. This increase between '22, '23 is solely due to that, getting in the trash business, kind of for lack of a better phrase. 2019 SPOLOST, you see a little up and down over the five-year history, spending and collections. We're in the sixth year of SPOLOST 19, and our budget, the outstanding funds, are primarily being used right now for street roadway paving and maintenance. Impact fee fund, you know, you collect impact fees when deals happen, when construction projects happen, when developers come. You can forecast some of that, but it's hard at times, you know, that we collect them as the projects come in. Main purchase in the impact fee fund for this year is a fire truck, about $376,000 worth of impact fee funds. Sanitation fund, I talked to when we, in that first slide, when we started talking about all funds. Again, look at the first three as a grouping, you know, pretty consistent. And then these next two years is when we got in the business. So seeing small increase, 5.6% increase. Hotel motel tax fund, I'll let you guess what happened in this one year right here. The pandemic kept a lot of people out of hotels. A lot of hotels were closed. The fund decreased this year, but has risen steadily and has actually surpassed where we were prior to the pandemic. Those funds, those hotel motel tax funds are shared equally between three organizations. 37.5% come to the city. We use the general fund for operations. Another 37.5% go to Explore, Newton, and Coweta. And then the last 25% goes to the Newton Center for their use. Total capital budget over time, which is all funds, like I said, so this could be some of the capital that we spend out of general fund. It's also, could be some SPOLOST funds, it could be other. But total capital budget includes four different funds and nine projects funded through those, combined four funds. And then lastly, around capital projects, some of those significant projects. The construction of fire training facility, which is ever so close to cutting a ribbon. I hope you get a chance to drive by, and we hope to before the year's out, cut a ribbon there, maybe early 2024, but real close on that one. You know, still working on the roundabout at Newton Crossing Boulevard in Stillwood. Intersection improvements at Jefferson Clark, Bollesboro, Jackson. I hope you know where I'm talking about, that S-curve as you come into downtown. Looking at sidewalks along Spraberry Road. We've completed the parking lot improvements at the Wadsworth Auditorium. Other intersection improvements, you can see listed in there. I won't read through them all. Paving of various streets through LMIG and SPOLOST, which this group touches every year as we let those projects and accept those funds. There's replacement of various culverts ongoing right now, and more to come in the future. And then design of Phase One of Lower Fayetteville Road, it's complete, moving into this next phase. And then roundabout at Grayson, Spraberry and Old Jefferson. So there's some significant capital projects that we wanted to draw to your attention that are using these funds over the past few years from those four funds. I'm going to step back, take a deep breath and answer any questions you may have, or try to.
Anyone? This is also the opportunity for anyone in attendance from the public to come forward and ask any questions that they might have regarding the 2024 fiscal year budget.
Thank you for the question. We just had a wonderful presentation about the Palmer Street Cemetery and all of that, and I'm wondering, have we allotted for any place for that project to take place in our 2024 budget, and if so, where is it?
No, ma'am. It's not currently contemplated. Yeah, once we have costs back, we anticipate, you know, coming to this body and securing those funds. But there's no, without an idea of what the cost may be, we have not placed a number in here. I would like to draw attention to the body, though, that in the 2025 SPOLOST referendum that was approved by voters this past November, there was one point. I'm looking at our public works director, Mr. Ray Norton. There's, there's a million plus in there for cemeteries. So there's some money in that fund coming. Again, we'll start collections in January. But we anticipate coming to this body at a time in the future to fund whatever that final improvement program is. Right now, without knowing what it is, it's not shown here. There's not, there's not a placeholder, so to speak.
Yeah, and I'm familiar with that because I was looking at the mausoleum drawing that you guys had put together for Oak Hill. But I was also going to bring up Eastview. There are some improvements that are needed over there. And I hope that this budget reflects, even though it says $2,200, it's going to cost a little more than that to fix some of the things over there.
Yeah. Part of that was we had some, the rendering you're talking about that showed a mausoleum. We also showed improvements to both Eastview and Eastview Annex. Both of those have some good, healthy landscaping done, and then a treatment, including some kind of high-style fence out front. And so both of those, like I said, Eastview and Eastview Annex, were both contemplated during that SPOLOST 2025, in addition to what you called out as the mausoleum.
Great.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
Any other questions from the public or the council? Good job.
Yes, very good job.
Anyone see, no other hands go up? I'm going to call the end of the public hearing at this time. Appreciate that very much.
Yes, sir.
And that ends, actually ends this agenda. There's no action item. So we will reconvene in six minutes for our regular 6:30 meeting. Thank you.
Hasko, one more thing. Christmas. I didn't want to necessarily bring it up in the meeting, but, you know, we've got these beautiful decorations at Oak Hill. They do nothing.
How are you doing, Sarah?